Yes.
All right. I guess we're gonna follow order for the July 10th Conservation Commission meeting. Why don't we do a quick roll call?
Catherine Summendt here. Nick Webb.
Yep.
Bertrand Schmitz. Lawrence Willett.
Here.
Mark Giappone. Mary Taylor Phelps.
Here.
Okay, Joan is here as a guest tonight. Uh, there's one little bit of this here, her term is up, was up. And she's on the agenda for townhouse to be reappointed, but sent with you. Uh, so here is a guest today, so she
All right. So then the people voting are in this room. All right, sorry Joan. Okay. So the minutes, what would I give her in terms of comments? It's in two different places, so which you want? You want to do the minutes or do you want to comment?
Yeah, wait, what did you turn?
You want to go first? So I just want to say we did have we're not a little bit much to do. But in terms of what we wanted to accomplish for the next step, we're off and running. The big ask was for another 6,750 to continue doing the pre-deep application. Um, and we got approval. We're gonna spend that money. Now, what I didn't get, which we're gonna have to really stay on all year, is I was trying to, I was trying to double dip and get the $50,000 commitment to, uh, put that into the, um, yeah, bond for next year. For next year. Uh, they were not willing to do that yet. Um, so we just have to stay on how many kids see that time a year. We gotta make sure we're fit. Online with our 10 company. And make sure that we get that. And that's the way it was leased. So that Yeah, they're not in the mode right now.
So, um, and surely don't they start requesting committees to submit, uh, for the capital commitment for the next budget sometime in the fall?
They do, uh, and we brought that up already.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's late summer, like end of August, early fall is when it starts.
Yeah.
And we want, again, I just need us to be in the
And did you mention the reason that 50 was being had for
I did.
That's what they hated for why it's lowed in.
Right, and I said, I didn't say, but I meant to say, what with inflation and all?
Yeah.
And increased property tax, we should, uh, boost that, that level. And I think we should. Um, I'll, I'll talk more in the subcommittee about some of the other things that I found out. But, you know, the, the general gist is it was good news, moving ahead. Um, yeah, for those that don't know, the owners of the property signed a letter of commitment, letting me attempt to sell. Including, which is really incredible, is they'll hold on to it until August of next year. So the timing's approved, the dollar amount is approved. And we're moving, I mean, this, this really is gonna um, yeah, where it goes maybe 25% or it's now 80% likely.
Well, no. Yeah, we do have to go forward safely. Um, but the bottom line is whatever we, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, okay.
So. Minutes. Can I get a, well, is there any discussion on last month's minutes such that we can run? I don't think they looked okay. I think they were fine, they were good at their representation. Do I have a motion to
Or approve?
Approve?
Approve the minutes of what was the date? You put in 10 June, June 11.
I'll send it.
All right, is there any discussion on approving the minutes? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Oh, you know what, I have to abstain.
Oh.
I was, hey, we're not here, that's right, you read, unless there's, well, somebody else does have the minutes, you can vote on them. Oh, I did read the minutes, yes.
Okay, well then, we're all 5-0, unanimous. Okay. So workshops, qualitative pathway. Uh, once more, I think there's not much really going on. As we get towards all the different foliage, we should send that out again. All versions of rolling major. Uh, so we'll get that done.
Is there the lead anything at the library?
Or? Oh, I'm sorry, we're at the that was not really bad. Um, so qualitative pathway, uh, I don't think there's anything planned for the library. Um, but to get paid, you know, we're sort of past the planning season.
How fully is that all to think about preparation?
There is preparation you can do.
You want to let people know.
Yeah. So in the fall, I will get a date at the library and I'll, I'll talk to students, sharing, see if I can get them.
He might come and see that soon. Something he couldn't think of.
All right, well, I'll start now. Getting the day
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure it's anything else? Uh, residential food complex.
Well, Catherine, you were at the meeting.
I was, I'm having Brett probably be the one to follow up with it because, um, was it in John's is the other one?
John's, you know, he
He was the one who was gonna contact the other school districts and see, you know, the other towns, see
Yeah.
how they were doing their school food competition thing. And, you know, I mean, we may have, it's gonna take a while, I'm guessing, they just finished school and all that stuff. He did say he was gonna do that, and I'm gonna assume he was like to follow up, I can't remember. But I would have thought he was gonna follow up with Brett because Brett was kind of had a talk meeting with him.
Okay.
You know, but, and so we can ask him and find out.
I think he, he said that John was receptive.
Oh, he was very receptive. He was more than receptive. He was like important.
Yeah.
And that's why he was the one who wanted to pay down there and find out whether the school could do.
Sure, sure. Who is Brett?
Brett Martin on sustainability.
Yeah, he's the chairperson.
And so we will find out whether he's a bachelor or not, I would touch things on that.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'd be happy to touch you, whoever, I mean, I know Brett very well.
You can hear from him, and if not, you know, we can follow up with him and see.
Which is completely what He just finished his first year of law school, man.
That's great.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
Good guy.
Yes.
All right. Um, Japanese knowledge, I have, you know, not much to report as said earlier, I think towards the end of the season, we even, I get out all you know, it changes what it looks like in the fall. So.
I'm monitoring that. Addison, because they cut it and they sprayed, but we saw that they sprayed.
Oh, they sprayed it.
I see what happens, like next year when it comes back again, and if it's any worse than it was last year, it's actually actually killing it out. But I'm kind of just taking periodic pictures of it, I see what's happening there. Was what in the spot.
You can just go back to the residential food complex team really quick, I commented. Um, who will I talk to? I have raised some meetings before. I would love to have on our page the document about food waste recently. Just like we have a dump.
Yeah.
It's nothing, so who would I talk?
Marriage.
Thank you.
Definitely. And you've got the page?
I do.
Okay. Yeah, you know, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Um.
Oh.
So now we're into old business. Uh, again, it was, we won't have any updates on um.
You know, the insurance companies use those things to fly over your house and take a picture? And then they tell you that they need a new roof or to cancel insurance.
That didn't happen.
They do, had it happened to people. Yeah.
Really?
Sorry, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then, great.
Then you tell first.
Well, you know, another reason to use the and you know
That's because once they cancel you, you're done.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I will do, but my home
Most of the time what they'll do is that if they do the if they take some pictures by drone, if it looks like it needs they'll look at it and we will not renew when it comes up. Let's say. And also, they also take pictures of debris in New York.
Yes, they do.
I mean, that it cleaned the debris up, because it could fly against the
That's right, anything.
Clean it up or we won't renew.
That's right, anything that's, you know.
She loves.
I'm getting, I know I'm going to. We've been, we've been trying to simplify the yard, but
Yeah, that's right.
I said, because
I'm reaching my door.
Oh, you know what, I'm getting 14 minutes in more.
I, uh, I refer to the Washington you're a little hacker, she's
If you want to
Yeah, this is public speech.
The thing is, that's what's happening now is, uh, starting to, to, uh, get a little bit okay. But it's getting a little bit, um, anti-blowing.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's getting a little bit, I know they've been through my neighborhood.
Well.
I told them, I said, it's supposed, supposed
Like, no, we, no, we, it's a bit. But, you know, I mean, well, it's you know, the insurance companies are covering and how it's getting expenses up.
Yeah.
Things, uh, shit. Anyway.
Um, so next topic is the discussion of the IWC point 1, 327 space tree. I think the, the real news story there is if anybody wants to attend the public hearing on it, it's, um, it's been moved to, I was, I think it was July 2nd. It's been rescheduled to have August. So, um, and then we're gonna make a decision by August 10th.
You know, we have last day to open the public hearing. Uh, decision is August.
Oh, okay. Uh, I did talk to the member of the IWC who had received our letter. And he was like, your level's dead on point, and is exactly what he said. You know, sorting their precision making up makes all the sense in the world. Especially as you read the coastal resiliency.
Yeah.
We just absolutely have to be protecting our land, that's right now, of course.
Yes, but we also have to stay out of the flood zones too, which is why they placed it there. That, that was the only place to put it, because coastal resilience is the, uh, shoreline management, so you're there's, uh, you know, there's areas that are gonna flood, so there's a lot of places, it's we, we had something, we used to have on here something about coastal resiliency on the agenda, just because I'm, I know, but it's not on here right now. And that's the only reason that I, I had sent, um, the, the plan through emails, it's not a finalized plan, I'm just kind of giving people a heads up that probably in a few months gonna be talking about some of the issues with that. Um.
Yeah, when Abby can, when Abby can make a meeting, that we can
Yeah.
Right.
I haven't heard too much about it right now, it's just that it's probably why, why we would need to have a background, so that when the issue comes up, we can, you know, at least be familiar with, you know,
Yeah, I sent I sent Abby a whole list of microservices.
You did?
I did.
Okay.
After reading that before.
Okay.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of reading.
It is, it is.
I mean, very
So, um, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the, uh, issue is, I just
You mean that 327s?
That 327, um, I, I just assumed that they're going to have the same concerns that they would have.
They do.
Yeah, and that, that would be what they would do. And it's up to them when they go.
I just have never, when I was sending them that, this, I never we never had enough application to modify that to the best of the
I, I was thinking about I have never seen that either.
So. It sounds like
With some that way, you have to buy a thing where they created some to, you know, there have been times when they had to prosper them to get to, you know, we have the honor of never and they agreed to create some, so.
Right.
Something that I've seen.
Okay.
Starting with mitigation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I didn't know the terminology.
Well, yes, so.
Anyway, yeah, it bothered me because there were two applications in a row that were infringing to, you know, the golden and so I think it's important. Glad we did it, and so I what was, thank you, Sheri, for, uh, all the uh, we got a letter to them and, uh, they took it well. They, they appreciated the support. Uh, that's that one.
Yeah, the public hearing is on August 6th.
Yeah.
It will be in the reading room. In
The reading room?
Yeah. Well, they're expecting a draft out of there? You know, public hearing, some
Never has, you never know.
That's right, I've seen some in the tutorial. Yeah.
Really?
It can get that way.
All right.
So there was one public hearing that went to, um, organized?
Yes, I remember that one.
I was there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So comments can, you can still submit comments.
Okay.
Um, what are
And it's, it's also, it's posted, that letter is posted to the application, so everybody can see.
Will it be read into the minutes or no?
I don't know if it's requested to be. Um, it, because it's, it's listed
Oh, it's part of the document.
Part of the documents, I see. You know, I have a question, remember the K. Todd Herving? That John Scott had, you know, they agreed to tell him to read to that ordinance? I wasn't wasn't where the Well, I'll tell you that must have pervert, do you remember the thing about K. Todd Herving? Oh, I remember, which I'm
Yeah, I don't remember something, but I don't remember what it was all about.
Uh, um, it was supposed to be, you know, for any roads that, you know, pass by wetlands or whatever, K. Todd had these curbs that are very shallow and they just go up gradually, so that with amphibian and such that get caught in the roads, they can easily get out instead of being brought over by cars. And that was something that was discussed by the town, and I thought I had seen it written somewhere, where someone, I don't know if it was someone who works planning a zone or whatever, had agreed that new roads with that situation would be, whenever there needed to be a new road built for here, that they would use K. Todd Herving. And I don't, I haven't seen it anywhere 20 years ago. That, it was long time ago, so when John Scott was, I what's with me and a bunch of people, you know?
That, that's a great concept, and you know, you should do, just, uh, submit a, a warrant, a sentence, that whatever that's what the K. Todd Herving stood for.
Right.
And if there's any ordinance required, they'll have to respond.
Because I think that would be a good situation where they had to drive with you know, you're talking about driveways versus roads. Yes, but it's, it's still, it's still something that somebody could think of as an option. If that were a consideration with trying to move the driveway a length from the wetlands there when they come around, and also to check in for any wildlife that might be jumping around. You know what I'm saying? It doesn't have to be just for roads, it's content. You know? Okay, but if, if the board, if it was just for roads, then
Right.
Perhaps it could be a suggestion from this commission.
Right.
Which would require another letter, but
Uh, we should find out what was, so if you do, we should that FOI. And then
And the Inland Women's feel like it's a risk, she's just
Oh, me.
Yeah.
They said for the project, definitely more.
Yeah.
The old one. K. Todd Herving, that's the only
That's the only
In the minutes from the Inland Women's meeting of 2015.
Okay.
December 2015, regarding developing the old order.
So nothing related to roads right now?
Right. Just the that one project.
That we probably have to go to the planning department.
All right, so then
Close call.
Okay, who do I write to?
Uh, just, you can write to the, uh, to the town, and you submit an FOI request as to what may what may exist. Certainly, K. Todd Herving.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, no, I think that would be, I don't think it necessarily applies to this, because, you know, at least in my books, it shouldn't be putting the driveway.
It shouldn't be, but if they insist on it.
Well, they can't insist on it.
Right, okay, they're in the I'm talking about if the Inland Women's would win. I'm talking, I'm talking about the record because they spend, so they would ask such a they need to ask if they act for that to be, uh, continuous.
Yeah.
It didn't make that much difference, but
Yeah.
It's a little
Yeah.
And if it has to do with new construction or new roads, it's not really an additional expense.
Right.
It's another type of curve.
Right, so new roads makes all the sense in the world, you know, it's, you know, weapons, I mean, it makes pretty
But it's only 2 and a half acres. That's what I don't understand, a multi-use development of a 2.5.
Well, you know what, population density is definitely, you know, density is going to have to we're gonna have to have some denser development if we want to save
The weight.
I'm not talking about reality.
No, no, no.
There's a lot of people, one single space, everybody can't have 2 acre to land.
On leisure.
You know? So, so people want to live in a, uh, mixed use or something, you know, near town or you want to like something different, and we should accommodate for different.
That's one who doesn't have been on our website.
Um, yeah, no, but I think that's what they're gonna do there, they have they have that property there for several years.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah.
So, anyway, we'll
Yeah.
So I think they'd like to go and just write a letter for her. Uh, she's gonna do a FOI to find out any of the
Right, because if you want to do a letter, it has to be in prior to August 6th.
August 6th?
6th.
Okay.
That for this particular problem.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
You know, I don't want to encourage them to pass any of the, I'm just trying to get a kind of, like, if they, if they, if they find, that's maybe those same processes.
Yeah.
If they could do this.
And by the way, that idea, um, is, uh, with most recent developments, where I think many, um, articles about turtles that come out of the wetlands
Yeah.
to get in places where they can lay their eggs, a lot of them get wet in the roads, um, and, and get and, and, um, so, oh, that's early, we'll be
Yeah, no, I love the town, they're maintaining roads. It's super
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. Uh, so there is a consideration, since we're in the new budget, of a donation to the Connecticut River, River Coastal Conservation Business. CRCC.
That's the one that you generally send the $50 donation to every year.
I think within the bracket of the region, because the Connecticut River is a downy road, say, look, we
Are you talking about the health district?
No, within the region, that's considered the Connecticut River region.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well.
So I, yeah.
Like to move that we make the, uh, contribution, the regular contribution we make for the to that decision.
Do I have a second? We're in tenth, we're in the seconds. Um, maybe the seconds. Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. I'll go through the motions, all opposed? All abstaining. Um, next topic is collaboration opportunities with the state building commission.
Do we have any more members on the state ability? Is it just the smoking stuff?
I think we got some more members.
So I think Jason Beatty was the member, but he's maybe
I mean Did they catch him with the Warship CP?
No, I, I think it was, like, his attendance was maybe a question.
Who is that? Um.
You would take this?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think we're moving, uh, the land acquisition, moving fairly uh, and I'm not sure there's much for us to do with the land.
Yeah, so.
I, I have some too.
Some things to report.
Okay. So I'm assuming that when we sort of reach the culmination stage of that, we can then turn to sustainability, coastal resilience also wants to work with us. Um, and so it would be nice to get them both just do a collaboration spitball. Um.
Do we have an assigned person from the Conservation Commission to attend the coastal resiliency meeting?
Yes, that is you. I just, I don't, that's often, didn't have the one on my sorry. Didn't, I went to, because But yeah, so that, it's very interesting, that's what it. It's very interesting, lots of work for you. But they have uh, I think they're staffed with. Or they, sure, it was for.
Yeah, so I think once we get through, you know, I don't want to distract us from the. Reading and law, yeah. Then once we get through that, uh.
I think sustainability can benefit from that though in terms of the little. Right, you know, the, the.
Well, sustainable in C.
Yeah, CT, sustainable CT.
Yeah.
Gets some kind of certification. Open space, yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, no, that's a part of that. Exactly, we will want communicated. Oh, yes. About that, yeah, okay, they're gonna call that mutation if such, when they, when they have to. You know, apply for their things, they're gonna need to submit.
Right, right.
I would, I would just make one comment. It's still a, uh, putting it in, it's still. Um, open space, uh. Preservation and acquisition should be an important part of the conservation committee. Because when you look back, the issue may spawn out of the open space advisory.
That's a.
Right, fifteen years ago, and that was our job, then by open space. Uh, for the town to consider purchasing down the road or coming up. And um, and so that was done, and then what happened was. It was decided that we merged the open space advisory committee with the conservation portion of. The planning and conservation committee at the time, um, and then they split. So the conservation commission became a separate committee incorporated into the uh. Open space advisory, so one that's.
What that said was that took conservation out of their regulatory committee and put it off into.
Right.
Advisory, so.
Yeah.
But.
But you know, I think if you look at our mission statement, you know. Identifying the land acquisition requirement by helping. Is really a pretty ambitious mission, we should, yeah, while we have opportunity, let's choose to say. Focus on.
Yeah, and by the way, who mentioned the CLCT, um, is a very enthusiastic about going forward in completion. Of this current purchase, and then once that's done, they want to move on to their next purpose. Keeping in mind, Westmore has gotten eighteen state brands in open space purchase, in fact, it's nineteen now.
Yeah.
One of our ten is number one, yeah, so we need to, we're in a pentagon. Um, it's, it's important to do that, especially given the uh economic advantages to tax to do open space purchase. Um, so again, that's important, but also coastal resilient, resiliency and sustainability is, are very important concepts as well. We just have to make sure that we don't get swallowed up and taking on trivialities.
Well, yeah, that's.
So, on, uh, open space is sustainability. And just about everything we do is conservation, conservation is not just open space. Conservation is a lot of things, and there's a lot of things we have to start considering besides open space.
Sure.
Living on a shore.
Right.
So there is one can sometimes be a priority elsewhere.
Yeah.
Depending, you know.
No, that's true.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we. Over the last couple of years, that's how we played, we didn't have a land acquisition, we were focused on a lot of other things. Now we've got the land acquisition, let's make sure we drive this.
Well, we're going to drive that. We should go at the same time.
Well, yes and no.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Anything else aside, I'm just working on one of them.
But I will say, um, with regard to political considerations, um, if we want to promote. Um, the town sentiment towards going forward with open space.
Yes.
But at the same time, to the extent that we get into the forefront of coastal resiliency. Which in essence is going to be a very expensive. Uh, position down the road of.
Right.
Which means increasing taxes, which means an unpopular stance with general public, so. It, we, we don't want to get too far in the front of that. Um, and then we become unpopular to the extent that it negatively impacts on our mission to promote open space, we'll get a balance.
Yeah, but, but this resilience is one of those things where it'll actually play into our mission.
Okay.
Because I think the land acquisition is gonna be part of that, a big part.
I agree.
But.
The end acquisition is gonna be part of it. But it's not just gonna be for open space, let me just put it that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
It's, it's just a, it's just a forewarning, anyway. Anyway, we, we have to do it, this, you know, where we live is a. Is, you know, there's going to be a lot of things that we have, we have a lot of time to do coming up, we have a lot of work to do.
Alright, so uh, does, to that thing, do you have any additions you wanna make for the next?
I think we might, I think we might have something, it's, it's not, it's not something that, that involves the uh conservation commission's. But it is a conservation issue, and it, it is probably too late now, because I actually didn't find out until last month, but. She's in town called Winjames. She bought a place a few years back. She's fixing it up all by herself, what it is, is um, I guess it doesn't always still agree. Who, who care and somebody may bought them during, during prohibition. So there's, they have an old stone house on the property, can I pay, where's this? It's on Tower Hill Road. So her address is fourteen Tower Hill, when she originally wanted to open it up as a bed and breakfast and agro tourist. Hmm. Uh, she had originally owned two uh lots, and one of them goes right down to the uh reservoir. Uh. It's a difficult, it's a difficult uh endeavor for anybody, and she do it by herself, so she got. Financially tied up with some rent or reowns, causing her to lose the second lot to someone who said they're going to help her. Um, so she sold in the lot to get the money to do the other stuff, and then she's. Supposed to be paying him back, and she was, not paying him back X enough, and so now he's selling the. Not normally something that we concern ourselves with, but. Um, the lot is, I think, three and a half acres, and what it does is it comes right off of the. Reservoir, but the um state forest access road at the end of Tower Hill. So that state forest area leads right into that. And that one parcel is the only area I think where the public would be able to get into the uh, to the Kelsey Town Resort. She, what she really wants to do is get the fifty thousand dollars back that she owes and pays the guy, but that's not gonna happen anytime. And, and it's actually a little bit too late, the guy doesn't wanna wait two more months for her to come up with a fifty grand and he. Uh, which is here, but, because it's the area where she wanted to do the um. Her project, add blast, spending, and uh different kinds of uh, of uh, working agriculture and all kinds of things like that. So I just thought, and I did write a letter to me, I'm just, I didn't, I don't know, I didn't really expect them to take me seriously at all, not knowing that I did. Let them know what the positive aspects of it were, but I thought. See, they could come along and buy it for what she owes them. And have her pay a leasing for the time that she's limited, for limited use for an agricultural thing. And then they would earn most of their money back, hopefully. And then when she settled property, eventually it would go to the winner, open space and trust. Uh, it was just an idea, I'm, I'm just, all I'm trying to do is like, promote, you know what I'm saying, like. Yeah. And it's, and so I, I'm just thinking maybe, so I didn't hear back from them. Because they wasn't, they have nuts, uh, I don't know, last week or something, but.
Okay, well, they only eat once a month.
Uh, you know, but it was during the holiday week too, so. And that's later on, but I think it's worth while to think about, to consider. Um, she did all that, and they said, oh, they couldn't do anything about it right now, because they're going to miss other. You know, thing with this open space, but the thing about this is, this is, this lot here wouldn't. Involve grants and that kind of stuff, it would be really just a quick transaction if they agreed to it, aside from the biggest.
Hmm.
So, I, it was just an idea, not a shot, to see if anybody will.
Will say to you that there's to be a response from the managers, um, they canceled the July meeting. So your method would probably be taking the agenda in the oral meeting, which is the fourth, uh, the fourth Tuesday.
So I just wanted to let you know, I'm gonna get a heads up, just so that you know, too, you know, since you're on board that too.
Yeah, if you can send me the copy, then I'll, I'll make sure to.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's probably too late now, that's worth a try, it's worth a try, you know?
You know what, if it goes down to the reservoir, uh, you know, I'm just thinking the clean water could be the, yeah, work. Water company would be very.
Oh, that would be.
And maybe they would be.
And there's one. I could, you know what, I'll send you a link, I've been doing a ton of research for this land acquisition, send you the link to the. Grant.
I don't think unfortunately the guy might have a property for sale.
Okay.
Well, we can tell you that. Shouldn't miss, but anyway.
Okay, yeah, well, I, we can do research, see if it's up and on Zillow or, uh, which, it's not.
Hey, I can see it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your consideration.
Alright, well, you know, I think uh, major wants a reference I did to at least get the first half of it. They will do a grant.
Uh.
They don't want anything on it.
Right, I think her idea was if she's just gonna do anything on it, it would be, you know. You know how you do like those little tiny things, you know, temporary things that you, you know, do exhibits and stuff like. It would be that.
Alright.
But in any case, the idea, I mean, she wanted to do a bed and breakfast there, even if she doesn't use that land. There's gonna be a big house right.
Yeah, right.
Locking the view, but, and that's, again, that's not, you know, but I'm just.
Alright, I'll send you the link.
Okay.
Okay, uh, looks like we may be in trouble in terms of a forum for the uh, the subcommittee. Since uh, the mics are not here, Mark's.
No, they said last month that they were done, they thought they were done. Addition.
Oh, sorry.
It's giving over a little bit to the.
We did, I, I, sorry, I moved that a bit. Uh, are there any additions to the, the last regular meeting?
Uh, I would only suggest giving a, we should control the resiliency gap, that's not going.
Yeah.
So, like, both the resiliency office.
Yeah.
So if there are any updates or developments, we can report on them.
That's it.
And it will always be there.
Yes, Mark, yeah.
Okay, I agree with that, I think we should do the same thing with sustainability.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just uh, cooperation with sustainability is the same as well. Um, and I'll reach out to Brett, see if I can get. Um, anybody else have anything that they want to add to the agenda? Yeah? Okay, then, uh, correspondence.
Okay, just give me a moment, if you guys.
Are you hearing us alright, Joan?
I was very, very choppy, I, I got my ear right here and I can only hear about fifty percent of what you were saying.
Yeah, I, I can believe it's the.
And what, it, the same thing happened one day when I was at the, you know, Zoom, I was chopping in and out. I'm gonna, I'll bring this up to Abby, but it's not just one meeting, it's not many work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I've tried to listen to town council meetings and it's very choppy.
We have to clear this.
Well, maybe.
They, they used to sell, they used to do different one.
Very wanted to.
Okay, now we can get to correspondence, um. Uh, you got, uh, everything that's coming in from the end of us.
They got a little bit.
I'm getting like, one or two a day, is there every day or something?
Is this the connecting lane conservation?
Yes.
It is in the very council level, again, the.
No, I, I'll get a lot of emails from them.
Uh, well, we have the, um. The correspondence between Mary and Joan about being reappointed.
Oh, yeah.
And Joan has said, yes, she wants to be reappointed.
So we don't have to do anything?
No, we have.
So, on the agenda?
On the agenda.
Okay, and then, well, she has to approve by time.
Even on a real?
Even on. They did all sorts of real appointments.
Okay, yeah. Um. If you guys wanna, if you wanna send a letter to support her.
I would, but it's so formulaic, it's like they just do all of you. Five minutes, so.
Didn't happen, but anyways.
A little reappointment.
That was to move somebody out.
Yeah.
Sherry, do I have to go to that meeting on the seventeenth?
I would contact Mary and ask her.
Okay.
It's, it's usually recommended, Joan.
Yeah, probably working is a problem.
I feel like it's a morning or evening meeting, what meeting is it?
Conference.
Conference. Re, reappointed.
Yeah, I, I think that they can vote, they can vote to reappoint her, but then she has to go. At her convenience to the clerk.
That's not what she was asking, oh, oh, she was asking if she should go to the town and else.
Yeah, I think it's mandatory. Is she working every day? Well, once they appoint you, uh, you should within thirty days go over to the town clerk and get sworn in.
Sworn in, I remember doing that, I remember doing both last time, I went to the meeting and then I got sworn in. At some later time, yeah.
Okay, um, that was about the only correspondence saved.
Okay, so we're gonna have to do an adminis, uh, so that concludes. Um, the regular meeting.
The, the. Your, um.
Okay.
That's maybe it's part of the bigger meeting.
Well, I guess. Um, probably worth it to have, you know, I know that you've got some things I can.
Yeah, and again, and so it's pure administrative, we don't have to have any votes by the, the joint, uh, in this. So.
So it's just a limited administrative session.
Yeah.
Uh, let me call in the order, call in the order, um.
I get, uh.
The only two members of it?
Uh, the two.
Larry.
Two members.
So we're not gonna do the, the ministers?
There's only two, we can't, we can't do any voting.
Uh, well, there, there can be minutes for the administrative.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah. Um. Sure, I just wanted to confirm, did you get my June twenty eighth email that gave you an update on the developments? For the open space?
Um, I, I, I may have gotten it, that's.
Oh, alright, um, and that's maybe you can text, because that's what I'm gonna report. So, uh, very quickly, let me get it on a table, two stars meeting. And uh, some of it's gonna be a rehab, uh, that it's gonna be a very comprehensive review, so we'll be, we, we can be totally updated. First of all, on June twenty fourth, the CLCT board meeting. The CLC president signed the ten thousand dollar grant agreement. Um, they had accepted our grant application, which we submitted on time for more pre-acquisition costs. Um, and they uh awarded ten thousand dollars towards. Uh, and they, uh, awarded ten thousand dollars towards the pre-acquisition costs we're going to incur now until we submit our application for the grant. Um, we get half of it. The CLCT is going to get half of it. Soon as the signed agreement goes into, uh, the Connecticut Land Conservation Council, the backbone. So we're getting that every ten thousand, five thousand. We'll get the other five thousand once we have paid the balance of the invoices and give them the copy of the receipts. They'll give us the other five. So that left us to get the balance of what we needed from the town. You reported that when you went to the town council meeting on July the third, they had, uh, agreed to, uh, award us an additional six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That's correct. And it was unanimous. Uh, and it was a very quick scene and it, I think they're totally on board with it.
Yep.
I've had conversations with the board members, uh, individually and they all seem to be very ready to go on this. Uh, I tried to arrange a walk on Saturday.
It rained.
It rained like, uh, right after I looked at emails, I think, oh, I think I'm going to skip it. Nothing's going to hit here than like half an hour later. It was, uh, something out of Noah. Uh, so.
We didn't have to.
We did not have to walk. Um, and I tried to reschedule it, but right now I'm not. Uh, Mike Hood is on vacation this week. Uh, Mike C. Is, he's hurt his hip or, or knee and is not really up to doing a strenuous walk. So.
Which might be slightly.
Yeah. Um, so, but I mean, my goal was to actually do separate walks and break up and not have a town committee meeting or a conservation committee meeting. Uh, but I can't find anybody from the land. Feels confident about knowing that. Yep. So I'll, I'll reach out to, my foot's on vacation. So, um, I'll reach out to Mark because Mark is.
Yeah. And, and the thing is, to the extent that they gave us the, um, pre-acquisition, uh, the additional amounts for pre-acquisition costs, I would say the best time for that walk would be, uh, council. It's, uh, when we're about to, just before we want to hit them, uh, for putting it on the capital. Capital expenditure budget.
Right. Straight back to the work.
So, but in any event, I think it would be more current to do it just.
Yeah, that, I agree, but I sort of had that keyed up and so, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay. All right. So the bottom line is, so we got the pre-acquisition cost, so we can move it. So what does that mean? That means the first thing that we have to do is I had sent out this June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four update, but it also contained directives to the different members of the joint subcommittee on what to do. Uh, we've already achieved the first two things, which was one, sign all the grant money, uh, for the tag grant, send it back so that it will be approved, which it was. Then you presented your PowerPoint presentation, which was a very good PowerPoint presentation, which stayed which was great. And obviously you were successful in getting the money at your presentation on July third with the council. So that's another step in the process completed. And the, the next step, now that we got the pre-acquisition money is we got to prepare that grant application from October third. What that means is two documents need to be ordered and acquired by August. So we can use that information to start preparing the grant. What are those two documents? One is the updated survey and two is the environmental study.
So they actually, so I, I was reading the document, the, the, the grant document. They don't have to be completed by the application goes in. You just have to say that you will get those as part of the study.
Sure. But the environmental study.
Yeah.
Was a key to identifying all the things that allow us to check the boxes in the application. So when we did the, uh, White's love day property.
Yeah.
We got that environmental study in first. And in fact, we allowed the environmental, um, person to help us, will be grant application, to find tool.
Okay.
And so it would be better if we could get it. So what, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call up, um, Mike Hood and Abby to, tomorrow, to make sure that they order the work to start on the updated, um, uh, the updated survey and the environmental study. Mike Hood, being a member of our board and, and being authorized to do that, he can do that with Abby. Abby knows who these people are. We already got their, um, proposals there.
Right.
Identifying the scope of the work that they're going to do. So it's just a matter of telling them, okay, go.
I think they already got that.
Abby would like to know who the contact from the land trust.
Mike Hood.
Will be with, for the town engineer to do the survey, the updated survey.
Oh, uh, that's right. And the proposal given by the council.
Right.
I think that might be.
Abby wants to know who will be the liaison that she can tell Chuck E. E. the town's.
Oh, oh, in my memo, I indicated it's Mike Hood.
It's Mike Hood.
Yeah. So Mike Hood is the liaison with the CLCT, uh, to, uh, to work with Abby as far as moving along in terms of getting forward. They immediately proceed with the updated survey and the environments.
Okay.
Now, Sherry, I'm somewhat disappointed that you didn't go through all the things.
Nope. That was the beginning. Um, get to.
That's number three. As the kids would say, T L P O.
So that's something pretty.
So that's, Mike, so, um, the applicable contact is Chuck E.
Yeah. And I will call Abby tomorrow just to reconfirm with her. Uh, we need her and Mike Hood to move forward with regard to making sure those two projects are ordered. The reason we need it ordered is so they can complete it in July and mid-August. Because sometime in mid-August, late August, soon as those things come in, I've got to call a, call a new joint meeting of our land acquisition subcommittee. So we can meet, look at those documents and start preparing the, uh, application, which has been submitted by early.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, I will do those two things. Calling Abby tomorrow and, and Mike Hood. And then call the meeting in mid-August first. One other thing I have to do now, Ken McDonald, who was successful in getting a letter of intent. They agreed to wait till next August, uh, to sell. And they also agreed to the fair market value of, uh, appraisal, one fifty nine.
Right.
They originally were asking for one eighty.
Yep.
They saw the appraisal, we showed it to them, they agreed to it. So the one fifty nine is going to be the bigger, the sale is going to be sometime in August. I requested Ken McDonald in this, uh, June twenty eighth, um, directive to proceed forward. We're now going to get a signed contract with the owners, which he's due, and also to order the title search.
Yeah.
He's going to order the title search now and then he gets an update next year just to order those. So I'm going to ask him to get that some for mid-August. So that again, we can meet as a joint subcommittee by late August. Get those documents in, review them, then taking that information, putting it into the application and trying to get the application done hopefully by September, working with the town.
Yeah.
When you do that, then we're going to meet the October.
Yeah. And I think there's an advantage getting the application in early.
Yep.
So as soon as we can get it in, once the grant hasn't even been announced yet, there is funding for it. We are, there's no requests. Oh, it's here.
Yes.
So as soon as that happens, I, I have Google, uh, yeah. Google alerts.
So now let's, moving forward, just to give a final projection of what needs to be done. Um, so once we do that, we get the application prepared, the October third submission, it's on or about October third. Um, the two other things we need to go forward with is one, we want to pursue acquisition of contributions from the public. So we want to do some kind of public program, which the CLCT is going to do, where we're going to solicit contributions from people. Like, for example, we have several people contributed to the White's love. We had the water company give us, I believe it was either twenty or thirty thousand.
Yes.
Thirty thousand. And then we also had, um, there were some individuals who gave ten thousand dollars uh, towards the contribution. And, and then also we can use this as a, um, public effort to get people to see conservation, the importance of it and to contribute. So all of that's going to be focused on the CLCT to the extent that we can, uh, give support to that. That's going to be one. So that's one effort we got to pursue. The second effort is we have the, um, energy companies land right next to this open space. We need to talk to them about giving up easements, which will allow us to access all the other contiguous properties to the, um, contiguous property.
Yeah.
That will then connect huge bargains, like animal bargains, trails, etc.
So I thought that was done.
No, it's not done yet. And, and that's another project that we have to do. The important thing now is focusing on getting that grant application in. But then we have to pursue public support, drawing it up and, and contributions. And then also getting those easements from, uh, developers.
So I did a, uh, literature search of other, um, public and private grants. Uh, I found a short list of about animal foodie, source, maybe water, uh, but there's also decent things that. Others, the national forest resurface. So I found this. Uh, there's no way we can have, have to do all these. So it's a, uh, what I would suggest is that we divvy the list up. People take one or two and fill it.
So when we meet in August.
Yeah.
We, we'll, uh, break them.
Yeah.
Uh, we can, we can, uh, take that and break it up. So everybody can do a little jazz like everyone's been doing.
Yeah. And Abby can be the editor before we submit it so that it's got the grant lighter. Yeah. You gotta be really careful.
Yep. Absolutely. And by the way, once we get all of this done and we successfully do this, it is now part of the loop rate for all future land acquisitions.
Correct.
The more we do, the quicker we can be tuned into the profits and move forward to get more grant money for the town to preserve wilderness.
Right. Right. And if there's not like in the town.
Yes.
That was my sense I got.
Okay. So that's it. That's the report. I'll follow up and, uh, we can, uh, I'll note by the end of the meeting, so.
All right. Good. Good. Uh, excellent. Thanks, sir.
Hey.
Uh, in the future, Donald's face been perfect.
What do you want me to send? A ten page letter?
We want to aim for. Well, this. We're doing a lot of work.
No, I haven't. Yeah, well, that's a very helpful. Uh, it was like I read that, but I looked like it was written as you see.
Well, I brought these memos also as a way for me to pick up from a flat sign assortment. To, so each memo leads into the next.
Yeah. So anyway, it was great. Um, I think at that point, we're now at the stage, uh.
To adjourn this.
Yeah. So, uh.
Actually, we adjourned the.
All second. Yeah.
Okay. Now you, you, you just don't say administrative stuff.
I did.
Okay. So now they're meeting now.
Uh, okay.
Who?
Okay, uh, can I get a motion to close the conservation commission meeting?
I just have one more question. You said you had mentioned something about the one or nothing that you're interested in that property. Who would I?
I'm going to send you the link.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I will definitely adjourn.
And I'll second.
Oh, any comments?
Uh.
That's Mary.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does she have, uh, any all vote? Uh, she was.
Oh, I can't vote.
Don't can't vote.
And, and, yeah, I got it. Any extensions? No? All right. We're adjourned.
Okay.
Uh, Mary, do you have a question as to where it's at?
Oh, yeah. It's like dinner.